Do you have time to read? Does that sound like the motion? Mr. Tolan.
We have any motions?
You want to put your point out. Okay, then just put that where I can get it when it comes time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Proton Waterman, would you grace us with the invocation, please?
If you would, please bow your heads with me. Our gracious and almighty God, we take this time to humble and remind ourselves that we do put our trust in you. Tonight, I graciously ask that your presence would be here with wisdom, with your truth, with your grace, and with your justice. We thank you that you are able to bring us hope even in the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of carrying out the responsibilities for which we have been elected for. I thank you for our elected officials, our city staff, businesses, churches, the families, and individuals that make our city, the city of Canton, the great place that it is. And we thank you for this, for it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Call to order on May 7th, 2024 council meeting to order. We'll begin with consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or revisions?
Mr. Mayor, I would request to amend the agenda for new business item F, discussion and possible action on an agreement for engineering services with Schnabel Engineering L.O.
Okay. New business item F. Any other additions or changes or motions?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Again tonight, we do have a guest speaker with us tonight, and that is the presentation for the South Canton Park schematic design. And we have Mr. Adam Williamson with TSW Planning. Welcome, Mr. Williamson.
Good evening. So we're excited to present the South Canton schematic plans to you guys. You saw it last year, the concepts. So we've moved it forward after some meetings with the public. And we made some revisions based off what we heard from the public meetings and working with the city. These are some images of more inspiration images. You can see kind of natural elements that we wanted to pull to the design. And these are some of the ideas that when we were working through it, we were looking at programming. We'll dive into that on the first slide. The second slide, we're looking at kind of stormwater and sustainability with bio swells and how to use the stormwater to our advantage. And then circulation, and then also just view sheds as you come into the park, how you can see different views from the parking. This is a simple plan that kind of describes it fairly well because this kind of gets busy. But you can see the different components. We have a dog park. A is a open lawn area. And then we have a small dog park and a large dog park. And the green area to the north is more of a play area. And then to the left, you'll see is the parking. And one of the changes we made that we heard was more one-way street or one-way parking drive from Ivy up. We made that change. So this is a very flexible area. And in the next slide, you'll see kind of more detail of this. It's kind of hard to read. But you can see one of the things that we wanted to do is keep all the trees. And this plan reads that way where there's a lot of tree saves and to make this and keep this wooded area nice and wooded. So this is a playground enlargement. There's a large gully that runs through the site. And you can also see a water tower on the top there. It's one of your projects that we've kind of been coordinating with engineering on that. So we took advantage of the gully in making it a play area for kids. And we have some perspectives to show that. And you can see some of the elements that we're proposing around the edge, those images, slides, and the tower, and just some playable type art. This is an enlargement of the dog park area. You can see DNC, that's the small dog park. And we see some agility type items in there, maybe a tunnel. And then it would be artificial turf mainly. And the same for the large dog park, which you see is labeled C. It's a little bit larger for the larger dogs and some of the same agility type skills training for dogs. This is a perspective of the small dog park, kind of looking over into, you see the stage pavilion in the background. And this is another view of that looking in the background. A, you see a bathroom facility. I mentioned the gully, the natural gully that exists, and you can see that in this perspective. Really, the trick to that is trying to get down to the bottom of the gully with a ADA. And you can see some of the paths kind of winding down there. In reality, we probably have more trees, but with the trees on there, you couldn't see as well. But you can see the surface at the bottom is kind of designed to be a rubber surface that would be like a creek area. We have the slides that we kind of worked with the grades to create that where the kids will be at the top and they could slide down, working with the natural grades and some of the other playground. And one of my favorite parts is D there on the side there. You can see the bridge that goes across, again, connecting one side where we can create a walking trail through that area. And also some great views over into that park area. This is that bridge I was speaking of. You can see how it works with the playground and working with the trees and really trying to take advantage of the beautiful nature that we have on the park now. This is a close-up of the bathroom facility that's located close to the playground. And you can see a pavilion behind that for shade for parents. If their kids are playing in the playground, they can be close to the bathroom facility and also close to a shade structure looking over the park. And then we did some detailed schematics of the architecturally of the building, how that works, laid out the floor plans and elevations of that. And we also, this is also similar in style as the other pavilion, but it's elevated so you could have a band there if you like. And it can be multifunctional in this area and also serve as a shade structure 24/7. And we did some schematics of this structure and really try architecturally to tile this together with some of the same materials, such as stone and the metal roofs and the natural wood elements you see in the beams. So that's our quick presentation, kind of give you guys an update on where we are today. We also did a cost estimate. I'm sure that's one of the questions, and this came in about 6.9 million with if we did it all at once currently.
Thank you, sir, for the presentation. It's certainly exciting to see these plans come to life. And I know we've had a lot of citizen input into these plans and different components. And I believe this is one of the agenda items on our retreat agenda to discuss a little bit more detail costs and components and priorities. It's also very exciting to see dog park visuals. I know that's one of the top priorities for our citizens as well and in our roadmap. But are there any general questions for Mr. Williamson at this time?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry, Travis.
Yes, sir.
On the slide, let me go back here. Under item 4A, in between F and D, I gotta keep going. Yeah, right there on that slide. I know these are just concepts, but I do see someone projected to be in a wheelchair down there. But how ADA accessible is this part going to be? Because it doesn't look like it's very flat.
Right, yeah. We're trying to get it to be 100% accessible. You can kind of see that trail on the left is kind of winding down there to meet those grades. So it's, we didn't want to do a ramp, but we would take it to 4.9%, 5%. You have to have a ramp. So we would max that out to be a steep sidewalk, but ADA compliant to get you down to that bottom space.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Just to remind council, the public may be watching. You mentioned really wonderful plans, but overall projected price tag is 6.00 million. If we did all of this and did it at one time, we do have $2 million grant already committed to the park. And I think these plans do include what mandatory elements of those. Again, you also see the new water tower, which is something that would, is that part of the total 6.9 million?
No, that's a separate item. But it is integrated with the park. We've been working with that consultant.
Okay, which of course that will come out of our water and sewer ponds. So just those notes, and we'll get into more details. Mr. Tolan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Williamson, this is a very impressive proposal and renderings that you have. I was just thinking, and I'm not suggesting that we do this before anybody jumps on my case here, but it seems that if we determine that, would you say it was 6.9?
Yes, sir.
Is a little pricier than what the city wants to invest. Have you guys given thought to not having the raised walkways and having those kind of at ground level, if you will? And if so, do you think that would remove some substantial cost if that became an issue with the city?
I think that would reduce the cost. I think there's, we probably just wouldn't go over that way with that connection. We would be at the lower, that ramp system to get down. And we could remove that piece if that, or we could phase it later if whatever's desired.
I see. Just from a ballpark, what do you, percentage-wise, what do you think that might potentially?
We have it in my cost system. I don't have the cost system with me. I'm hesitant to throw out a number.
Yep, I understand.
But we do have that information. We can get it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
If I could just mention from comparisons, I think the improvements we did at Harmon were a little over 5 million, 4.3 million. And that was with existing infrastructure in place. So that kind of gives you a little bit of comparison with raw land versus rehab.
Anything else? Thanks, sir. Appreciate having you with us tonight. You have in your packet the draft minutes for our council meeting on February 15th. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have two informational items this evening. And we'll start with a review of the January financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the financials for the month of January, which are four months of activity in fiscal year 2024. So in a perfect world, you would see, as you flip through the financials, that we have received and expended approximately 33% of revenues and expenditures. But as you'll see, everything has a timing difference. Some revenues come in early, some come in late, and expenditures do the same. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you've prepared any. I did not schedule any purposeful remarks tonight because we have been scrambling to wrap up our financial audit for fiscal year 2023. As you know, we're experiencing some turnover in some key positions. So we're really hustling to get some of that work done. I'm hoping that next meeting, next council meeting on March 21st, we'll be bringing some budget amendments that are being recommended by the auditors for fiscal year 2023. And the city manager and assistant city manager will probably have more information for you during the retreat regarding those items. I also just wanted to touch that we have started the city's audit with Comcast and Windstream. And those are underway. One thing that's out there, we noticed that the Comcast franchise agreement will expire this month. So in the future, we'll be bringing steps and suggestions to standardize a new agreement with Comcast. And if you don't have any other questions at this time, I'll be glad to take questions from the city manager later, or we can review more items in the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Waterman?
Ms. Forrester, can you expand on the standardization with Comcast? What, I guess what items of the agreement would you be looking to standardize?
That's something that we are working with a consultant on. And that's part of that GMA contract that we approved back in January. So they'll be reviewing our items. They'll be reviewing the audit that they're undergoing right now to determine what terms need to be suggested or strongly encouraged.
So in a way, to make the agreements between Comcast and Windstream somewhat identical?
Well, this is just the Comcast right now.
Okay, but in terms of standardizing, I would assume Windstream's agreement would somewhat mirror that.
Well, right now, these agreements that we have are pretty old. And they follow generally statewide process that's general for every city and county. And some of our consultants have recommended changes that may benefit us or strengthen our position with these large utility service providers.
So tailoring it more to?
Yes, to our needs and the facilities that are in our jurisdiction.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And they'll also bring some best practices from some newer franchise agreements that have come up and that give either more leverage to us or more leverage to the franchisee. That'll all be in the recommendations.
Yes.
We'll take the ones with more leverage for us. Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Any other questions for Ms. Forrester tonight? Of course, she's always available. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we have an update on the proposed zoning map. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are still working on updating the zoning map. There are numerous changes that have been proposed to it, such as elimination of some of the residential zoning districts. We're kind of waiting on some direction on that one to rezone a majority of properties to the R10 by eliminating the R4, R20, R15, and a couple of other districts. There was kind of an uproar from residents along East Main Street. The position of the council may have changed some there. Also, we've been asked to identify and note the following properties that are owned and used for government purposes to be moved to SU, which is special use. These would be properties owned by the city, the county, the state, school district, the housing authority, the building authority, Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. Properties that would not go to that would be the development authorities and the DDA. The deletion of the two zoning districts, PD Business Office and PD Traditional Neighborhood, seems to be a no-brainer as there are no parcels currently zoned with that designation. The NC district would be deleted, and those two properties would be zoned to general commercial. And the RA6 properties, that designation would go away, and those properties would go to RA8. The properties that are zoned ORT, we are in the process of contacting all of those property owners to let them know that their zoning is going to change. There's plus or minus 125 properties that are zoned that. And we will be seeking input for them and letting them know what our position is to designate their properties.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I know we kind of discussed this and discussed trying to get some clarification on the, at least the non-residential proposed changes and possibly act on those sooner rather than later and continue to look at the residential classifications with much greater scrutiny. And I know this is, again, one of the big topics on our agenda for the retreat to talk about that in depth. Just reminding council that the events will be sunsetting at the end of this month. And also discussed with the city manager, kind of desire to compile a report of, you know, the final proposed changes at this time and just what the information and data that was gathered during the events. So we just kind of report back to that as sort of, this is what we learned and this is how we propose moving forward. So any specific questions tonight? I think that was just a general update. We're waiting on some more information, I think, from Mr. Green and his team. And we'll be discussing it in greater detail. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any announcements this evening? Now, we'll move into our 10-minute public input. And we have one citizen resident signed up to speak. Would you please come forward and speak clearly into the microphone at the podium and state your name and address? And that's Mr. Stephen Peck.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Peck. I reside at 170 Killian Street in Ward II. I have a few concerns that I would like to bring to your attention tonight. Firstly, there are ongoing problems with vehicle-related disturbances, excessive speeds, constant use of horns, house-rattling music, disruptive exhausts, parking in the middle of the road. And they've all become a common occurrence, a daily occurrence. The excessive speed is incredibly unsafe for everyone who lives on Killian Street, especially since foot traffic has increased over the last few years. I see mothers pushing strollers, teens and children walking on the road. Well, you have individuals flying up and down it at incredibly unsafe speeds. People will lay on their horns instead of getting out and walking to the door without regards of the time of day it is. Usually, it's in the afternoon, and it's in the evening. Music's so loud that it rattles windows. And the majority of it comes from 200 yards away over on Meridian Street. And that is also a daily occurrence. Despite repeated complaints, it persists and requires constant intervention from police. Exhaust from vehicles that are just as loud as, if not louder than, music has become a problem. At nighttime, there are a few individuals going up and down with backfiring exhausts. And if you ever heard that, it is quite loud. Stopping the road has become a common occurrence as well. People believe the hazards are a do-whatever-you-want-where-you-want button instead of a I-nneed-help button or look out for me. Secondly, the streets in Ward II are lined with trash. It seems like every morning I wake up, there's just new trash on the lawn, be it beer can, plastic bottle, plastic bags, car parts. And while on the topic of that, you know, it impacts the environment around us. And talking about the environment, burning hazardous materials has become a great problem in my area as well. Plastics and rubber has also increased over the last few years. And when you go outside for fresh air, it's just very toxic and choking. And that can't be good for the animals, let alone the residents of the area. Thirdly, a very increasing problem is public urination. And it doesn't matter where it is, on the side of businesses, the houses, on front lawns, in the middle of roads. I've seen it just about everywhere in the area. And lastly, there are some individuals in the area that really like to celebrate holidays. I myself do enjoy fireworks. But they've gone from small mortars and firecrackers to just Disney-sized extravaganza's, really. And it seems like they're getting to a rather unsafe level for residential areas. But the more dangerous celebratory action that has shown up in the neighborhood over the last couple of years is firing off rounds. And for those who might not know what a round is, it's a bullet from a gun. You know, I'm a law-abiding gun owner. I support the Second Amendment. But the thought about mag dumping a 9mm indiscriminately is unacceptable. I just wanted to come here today and inform the board of what is transpiring in Ward II. As for solutions, I don't know what would be, you know, just here to start a conversation. Clearly, having the cops show up, it's not having an impact on any of this. And I feel every time I call them to make a complaint, I'm wasting their time, you know, to do something more important. But hopefully, I was able to shed some light on a few issues that plagued my neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. We have one item on old business this evening. That's item A, discussion and possible action on resurfacing intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the city of Canton, along with the other municipalities, joined in with Cherokee County for a cooperative bid for resurfacing through our Elmid grant from the state of Georgia. Those bids did come in. The intergovernmental agreement that you have basically allows Cherokee County to do the work on our behalf with the vendor that was awarded the bid. That vendor was Bartow Paving. The initial estimate for our paving work was 523,000. The bid came in at 516,000. So I would ask that council consider approving that bid document tonight. And we will attach the actual, approve the intergovernmental agreement tonight. We will attach the bid sheet to that agreement that we send back to Cherokee County.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. We discussed this at our last meeting, and we were just waiting on the final bid numbers, anxiously awaiting and hoping they would fall within budget. And it's nice to hear they fell a little slightly below it, which is always a good thing. So any questions for Mr. Peppers on this? So, any questions for Mr. Peppers on this? Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resurfacing intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County in the amount of five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
So, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Moving into New Business, Item A, Discussion of Possible Abandonment of Alley Between 120 and 140 Chrysler Street. Mr. Green?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Our office has been contacted by the owners of 140 Chrysler Street in hopes of abandoning an alleyway that runs along beside their house. There are numerous alleyways such as this that are scattered throughout the city and I believe that they were once used back in the day for coal delivery. The adjoining neighbor at 120 has also been notified of the owners of 140, a Chrysler Street's a desire. And we're here tonight to see how the council might want to approach the abandonment of this alleyway or even if you have any desire to. Over the years, we have abandoned custom right-ofways and some alleyways through a variety of means. And typically, the right-ofway or the alleyway, half of it goes to one property owner and the other half goes to the other property owner. So, we're here looking to see how you might want to do it. Certainly, there will be the need for a survey to be done. And typically, the property owner requesting the abandonment will bear that cost. So, between now and the next meeting, hopefully, we'll get some direction from you folks or Mr. Peppers or Mr. Dyer as to the way that you would like to do this, if you even have a desire to abandon this alleyway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. I know we've dealt with specific instances on that alleyway over the years and typically on a case-by-case basis. Again, the city has no easements in this particular area or that. And we've had instances in the past, I recall, since I've been serving, that, you know, where you had the alleyway between two properties and there's not an agreement. So, it's not clear that this is an agreement. But my understanding is that this abandonment would be necessary for them to settle this estate and then potentially sell property. Again, it's something, my understanding, that really has no real value to the city at this point. And again, no easements or services in that area. You know, there's also instances, and I speak from personal experience, that, you know, that alleyway and certain parcels, I mean, there are issues with the deeds and surveys and, I guess, have to be, as you mentioned, surveyed on a case-by-case basis just to identify those particular property lines in this area. So, I don't personally have any issue with that. And Mr. Dyer, Mr. Peppers, you guys see any issues with this or anything we should be cognizant of going forward?
No, we just have to, we have to notify people along that right-ofway, whether that's just those two property owners or there's houses at the other end that connects to another alley or another street. So, we'll have to figure who has to get notice. Your decision is just whether it serves a public purpose anymore, which it clearly doesn't.
Right.
And then abandoning it and then who do we convey it to are two different steps. So, we can figure that out and maybe do all that at once.
Okay. Any questions?
Does the property owner understand that they would probably bear the cost of the survey?
I have not conveyed that from that yet because I was waiting for direction on, from the council.
It would seem that we should notify them then and see if they want to proceed.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think something, basically, the city is abandoning property that owns or has right-ofway of, then certainly, and I know in some cases, when we abandon, we actually ask for compensation for that when there's a use or value to the city being done. And this one, certainly not something, we can be generous but not create any additional costs for other taxpayers that aren't impacted by, these two property owners will benefit from that.
We could probably accomplish the abandonment without a new survey because there will be old plats, subdivision plats, and we could just abandon by reference. The property owners would still have to get surveys to know exactly where the boundary line will end up. But for our purposes, we might be able to do it without.
Right.
That, just by saying, referring to a recorded plat and say we're abandoning that portion.
Okay. If you could let us know then, and if one of those property owners wanted to sell that property, obviously, I'd have the survey done as part of that process. So, that makes sense.
We got a question.
Yes, Mr. Roach.
Mr. Dyer, if that alleyway connects to another alleyway, does that leave them?
I don't remember if it connects to an alleyway or a street. Teasley Street, I think it may run between Chrysler and Teasley Street. If it's two public streets, obviously, nobody's using it as a cut-through. But if it connects to other alleyways, then...
Yeah, it does.
There's another alley that goes from East Main Street down to...
Yeah, this alleyway goes a pretty good ways down behind, you know, several houses.
So, that'll, that can services the access. I guess because it goes on behind, you know, between East Main Street and Teasley and then it dead-ends.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that anybody's using the alleys for anything. And I know that Dr. Nations is going to come and ask for abandonment of alleys running between her property and Gresham Pool and behind there. So, I think we're gonna probably see people coming and asking finally to, mostly because everybody needs that five feet or whatever, it helps to get a little more area.
Right. And we discussed, I discussed with city manager, I mean, could we look at those alleys kind of holistically and look, but there are individual instances that come up in properties and parcels and recordings over time that, I think, certainly seem to make sense to do it on a case-by-case basis. So, any other questions?
Just one follow-up. Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Dyer, as it relates to, you mentioned that this city would require a survey necessarily, but are you saying that there could be a requirement between the two property owners to decide exactly where that line is?
Well, just to know where it is on the ground. And now that I, when you started asking that question, I remember, for us to do a deed, we would probably need the survey if we were gonna deed it to them. But I'll have to see how much detail the plat has.
Okay.
Because if it shows that it's a ten-foot width or fifteen, we could just say, you get half of it and you get half of it. And then a surveyor would go figure out where it is actually on the ground.
Thank you.
And I'll mention, in this particular interest or case, if you look at an aerial survey with the property lines are superimposed on this, it looks like the property owners at 140, that their driveway or access to their property is in that alleyway. Now, that just depends on how accurate the property line for overlayed on an aerial photo. That may be an issue as well as to who gets half and half.
Obviously, if somebody's got their private driveway on there, it's not serving the public purpose anymore. And there's no reason for the city to still have right-ofway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Moving to Item B, which is for discussion only, is just, again, Discussion of Task Order Five with Keck &amp; Wood, Inc. for Highway 140 Utility Relocation, amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. So, this item is for the design of utility relocation for the Highway 140 at Marietta Road, Riverside Parkway, realignment that we're currently undertaking with Michael Baker International. This project would take us through the entire rest of the phasing with utilities and then they would design the water and sewer that has to be relocated. Due to the realignment of Shoal Creek, we have a pretty large number of water and sewer lines that are gonna have to be relocated in that area. And that's what this contract would be for.
Again, and that's just for the design and engineering?
Design only, yes. I have spoken with H2O and they believe that they will be able to complete this work as part of their, their, I can't remember what their contract is called.
Their contract for the line crew. For the line crew.
The line contract, yes, yes.
Awesome. So, that's good news. So, any discussion or questions for Ms. Watson? Okay. Moving on to Item C, Discussion of Task Order Twenty-Eight with Atkins for State Route Twenty widening Butterworth Road to I-575 Water System Facilities, SUE verification and preliminary relocation design, ten percent and the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Ms. Watson?
So, this is for the Highway Twenty East project, or actually, I'm sorry, West project. We've recently been notified that GDOT is moving forward with that project and has already released Phase One for utility. The next phase will be Phase Two, which will be from Butterworth to I-575. And during that process, we'll have to have our utilities located and a preliminary design laid out. And basically, Atkins would be looking at all of our utilities in the area and deciding whether or not they need to be relocated based on GDOT's alignment.
Okay. Any questions? Then Item D, Discussion of Third Amendment to Professional Services Contract Utility Service Company.
Thank you. So, this is a amendment to the Utility Services Company contract, which is our water tank maintenance company. Basically, due to delays in tank renovations, they have come up with a cost amendment which on, which is, for one Great Sky Tank, the original renovations were to occur in 2015. However, there's been a significant delay in that work and costs have significantly increased due to inflation. And the reason why we have delayed renovations is because we had to have improvements to the Amos Road Booster Station, which are now completed. We do need to run a test to make sure that we can bypass the tank to supply water to Little Canyon without the tank in service. We will not be able to run that test until November at the earliest due to irrigation. So, this, this contract would be to increase the cost due to the delay in services. And then for the Big Oak Tank, there's also been a delay in the renovation. We currently have a bid out for the booster pump station at the industrial park, which will allow us to take that tank down and then those renovations can occur. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And I think this is amendment to a contract, but if I'm not mistaken, the original contract was executed in 2013, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, it is quite old a contract. So, it certainly helps to justify an amendment to kind of update that and bring us to where we are today on our water tank maintenance. So, any questions for Ms. Watson? Item E, Discussion of Award of Change Order One for Highway 140 to Avery Road Waterline Relocation Project, Cam Contracting, the amount of seventy-three thousand one hundred dollars. Ms. Watson, you're up again.
So, just to let everyone know who the new council members, this project was bid out in 2022 and was awarded to Cam Contracting. There was a delay due to the contract between GDOT and their contractor, which caused Cam to be pushed off for a year before they could do the work. Due to that, we did have a change order. I'm sorry. Due to that, we had to, there was an increase in cost that went on to the original invoice and we also had to put in three eight-inch wet taps, two eight-inch insertion valves and two longside services for a complete change order amount of seventy-three thousand one hundred dollars.
This is just for discussion. I guess you'll be bringing that change order at the next meeting for consideration approval? Any questions from Ms. Watson on this?
Do you have one?
Good. Mr. Waterman?
So, the change in costs is just attributed to the addition of the wet taps and not...
No, I'm sorry. I explained that incorrectly. The reason why the wet taps and the insertion valves were done versus what was originally designed is to keep the people that were out there from being out of water. So, the way that it was originally designed, you would have had to cut the water off in order to replace the lines. The insertion valves allow you to shut off water without turning off water to the, to the citizens.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
You're welcome.
And Item F, as the agenda item was added by the city manager, that is Discussion and Possible Action of Engineering Services Agreement with Schnabel Engineering for the Hickory Log Creek Dam. Mr. Peppers?
As you may be aware, we co-own a reservoir with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority and we have a dam that's associated with that particular piece of property. Schnabel Engineering has been the engineer of record on that particular project since it first started and we have always had a contract with them for our monitoring of the dam, dam monitoring, if you will. Our contract with them is coming to an end and so this is, this is a new agreement with them. It's a five-year agreement for them to do the monitoring. Basically, they do a couple of visual inspections every year and then they do some full inspections on an annual basis. We are required to do that as part of our project permit through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and Environment Protection Division. The total cost of this contract is three hundred thousand dollars over a five-year period, but we only pay twenty-five percent of the project cost because we're only twenty-five percent owners of the dam. So, our cost would be about seventy-five thousand dollars over that five-year period or roughly fifteen thousand dollars a year. The reason I asked to put this on the agenda, when we deal with contracts on the reservoir, we normally let Cobb County Marietta Water Authority take the lead since they're the largest by percentage. Their board has approved the contract. It's been signed off on by their board. Then we take a secondary position to look at the contract. Contract's been reviewed by staff. It's standard to what we've opted for. I would ask that council consider moving forward with the contract. One, because it's budgeted. Two, it's within my spending power, but it is a contract that you have to approve. And three, because it does take time to schedule the onsite work by the engineers, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible so that they can get it on their calendar and get out for their annual inspection. So, I'm happy to answer any particular questions you might have on the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. As you mentioned, this is renewal with their contract. Was the previous term five years also?
Yes.
Okay. And we know what the new fees comparison to the last contract?
Very similar. We, we, so Canton and Cobb County Marietta Water Authority work on two different years and so every year when we work on the budget, we do estimates based upon where we, you know, for prior years. This falls within the line of our estimates. Normally, we'll budget anywhere from a three to five percent increase on professional services on an annual basis. Does this fit within that line?
Thank you. Obviously, when you own a dam, you have to do dam maintenance, so it makes sense. I couldn't pass it to Peter, so I'm sorry. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Ms. McGrew?
In the staff, in the staff recommendation, it recommends approval and not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. If there's a motion, should that motion say that it should not exceed seventy-five thousand dollars?
It can. I mean, ultimately, this contract is set up to not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars, so that means our portion should exceed seventy-five.
Thank you.
I just wrote what was in the actual contract.
I understand. Thank you.
And I think the percentage that Canton pays is covered by the other agreements, so...
That's right. It's under our, it's under our reservoir management plan and project agreement.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. McGrew?
I motion that we approve the agreement for the engineering services of Schnabel Engineering for the five-year term with the...
Engineering for the five-year term with the project cost not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. And Mr. Peppers, you're up with your report.
Yes, sir. So I'm very excited to announce, and we'll have a press release going out tomorrow, that I have hired a new police chief. Chief Marty Farrell will start with us on March 27. Chief Farrell comes to us from City of Marietta. He's been the, he's, he's spent his entire career with the City of Marietta in law enforcement, serving as an officer, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, major, deputy chief, and ending as the chief there. He is very excited about joining our team. He has an extensive background in all, all forms of the agency, from internal affairs and investigations, patrol, special operations, administration, records, big advocate of community outreach. We did our interviews last week with the finalists, and he was, he was just the, the top choice of everyone who was on the interview panel. So we're excited to have him. Like I said, he'll be joining us on March 27. Most, most importantly, he's looking forward to being a part of a team and, and working with our officers. He, he let us know very quickly the reputation that Canton Police has in the region, and he hopes to, to continue that. I would like to thank our interim chief, John Lummis. I think he's done a fantastic job over the last couple of months. And, and specifically, our officers as a whole. It's very stressful when you go through getting a new, a new department head, especially for some who've never had a change in the chief. And our team's done an admirable job during this process. Very excited by the work that Mercer Group did for us in the national search. We had a lot of applicants, more applicants than they expected. And I think that's a testament to our community and our department. So I'm, I'm excited to announce that to you. Like I said, we will have a press release going out tomorrow. We'll have some additional information in it. I was able yesterday to notify the department, members of the department, and as I had notified you as well. So, so we will make sure that when Chief Farrell starts, we'll have a reception forum and some time for him to meet the public and be available to you as well. Also, I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to, I wanted to mention our Team Members of the Month. We're a little bit delayed in January, but Maria Chang, who works with us up front in reception administration, she was our Team Member of the Month for January. David Casey was our Team Member of the Month for February. David transitioned from Public Works. He was one of our members for Team Clean Canton. He is now our custodian at, at Elizabeth Street and has quickly become a fan favorite over there with the Police Department Municipal Court IT. They enjoy working with him. Every month, it's always a joy to, to get to meet with the Team Member of the Month and surprise them. Sometimes they're nervous coming to the city manager's office and, and gotta, gotta, kinda gotta let them go through a little bit of pressure before you give them out the big frame and the awards and all that. But it's always, it's always interesting to see how, how they react. And every month, I'm just impressed with how humble our staff is and how, how proud they are of the fact that their teammates decided that they should be the employee of the month. So I did want to recognize those two individuals. Mayor and council will be having our retreat next weekend, starting on Friday. It'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We're gonna be at the, the new Cloudland Resort at Michael Moore, which is just in Walker County. One of the reasons why we picked that particular location is as the city's working with our consultant on hotel and resorts for our site at the Bluffs and also from downtown. We thought it would be a good idea to see one that's just come out of the functioning and the story behind it and what it, its impacts will be in that particular community. So that'll be a good place for us to go. Right now, it appears that we'll have some staff there on Friday, and that'll be when we review projects and we go over some of the existing programs and, and questions that they have for you on some of the direction of those projects. Saturday will be a time where we'll go through the roadmap and we'll have conversations about some bigger issues as a council, more policy-related things, and then we'll wrap up Sunday morning. We hope to have the agenda out for that tomorrow so that, so that it will be out to the public and also, also out to everybody on the council at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Congratulations, Ms. Chang, Mr. Casey, for their Employees of the Month awards. And again, on behalf of mayor and council, we want to thank our appreciation, pass on our appreciation to, to interim chief Lummis on the job well done. Great news on Chief Farrell and certainly a stellar background. And I know, I've talked to several council members, and I personally have done some checking in his background, and nothing but positive and blowing, glowing reviews from everyone he's worked with. So we look forward to continuing the excellent work that our police department is doing and knowing that the leadership will continue to be, be strong. So. And one of the advance, we can advance, thank council for, for sacrificing their weekend next week and look forward to the great work and discussions we'll be having to keep moving our city forward to the benefit of our, of our residents and businesses. So look forward to the retreat and, and all we have to talk about and consider and, and the work ahead. So, thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
For my report, I can have some appointments I want to make. And I know that we have some council members that have some appointments to make tonight. So again, this is on our ongoing efforts to completely build out our, our boards and commissions and keep those functioning and doing all the great work that they're doing. So I will make my appointments. I'll ask for council appointments, and then we'll, we'll consider that slate of appointments as a holistic slate and ask for a motion to second and approve those for council. So I have three appointments to make. And the first one is for the Board of Appeals. And I'd like to point Jeff Adams to replace Luke Smith, who is, needs to step down from that, from that board. Many of you know, know Jeff. He's, is developer. He would be great for that board. I think Mr. Roach knows him personally. So, but he is excited to take on this role and, and be of service to the city. Second appointment I would like to make is to the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Penn Hodge, who has been serving on that authority, has done an excellent job, has asked to step down. We, we all know he has lots of projects going on in the city and, and is quite busy. And I'd like to point Mr. Royal, Royal Seifuentes to that, to that position. He's a citizen of Canton. He and his wife Cynthia own La Luna Bakery on Marietta Road. And Mr. Seifuentes works for AT&amp;T, very knowledgeable, experienced young man, and is, is currently working on software products for first responders through the FirstNet Authority. But is very enthusiastic to, to join the DDA Board. And it's great to have some representation for, from someone in the expanded Downtown Development Authority District. And then my third appointment is to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'd like to report, like to appoint Nathan Rich, who is a resident on Cherokee Street, and to replace Jeff Brown, who has stepped down from that commission. Mr. Rich is a, in a construction business, has a passion for historic preservation. Some of you may know the, the home that, that he bought and is working on is Sarah Latham's house, which is actually historic home in, in that Ward Two. So those are three appointments that I would like to make. And at this time, I know we have council members that would like to make appointments. I know, Mr. Waterman, you have some appointments to make.
Ms. Mary, I just have one. I would like to appoint Mrs. Tracy Busby to the Ethics Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Waterman. Ms. McGrew, I believe you have some appointments?
I do. Thank you. I would like to appoint Ms. Deb Payne to the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board, to the Ethics Committee. I would like to appoint Mr. Lee Stafford and Ms. Bethany Stafford.
Okay. Any other appointments this evening? Oh, yes. I'm sorry about that. Yes, I need to make new appointments to the CID Board, which is the, the, um, Community Improvement District. Get these, 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 these abbreviations, a lot to deal with. But this is the Community Improvement District is actually the, the board considers the, we have Community Improvement District at Canton Place, Marketplace. And the city has, the mayor has two appointments to that. They're not voting members, but they are there to basically to, to, to understand what's going on with that district and report back to, to mayor and council appropriately. So for that, I'd like to officially appoint Councilman Brian Roach to that. And then reappoint, it can be an elected official or citizen, and reappoint Brooke Schmidt to that, that board, who's currently, has been serving on that board as well. So I add those two to the list. Any, any others?
What was Rich's last name? I'm sorry. I was making?
Nathan Rich.
Nathan Rich. All right. So I just want to make sure I have all of these correct. I have Jeff Adams replacing Luke Smith on the Board of Appeals, and that's the mayor's appointment. Raulse Fentes replacing Penn Hodge on the DDA. That's also the mayor's appointment. Rich replacing Jeff Brown on Historic Preservation Commission as the mayor's appointment. Tracy Busby for the Ethics Commission, and that's Mr. Waterman's appointment. Deb Payne to the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board, and that's Ms. McGrew's appointment. Lee Stafford to the Ethics Board by Ms. McGrew. Bethany Stafford to the Ethics Board by Ms. McGrew. Brian Roach to the Community Improvement District Board by the mayor, and Brooke Schmidt to the Community Improvement District Board by the mayor. Is that all of them?
Everything I have on my list. Okay. So we checked and double-checked. So we have those appointments. We have both my appointments and the council members' appointments. Do we have a second to that slate of appointments?
Second.
Okay. And again, all in favor of those appointments, say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the appointments. And again, we want to thank these, these citizens and elected officials for, for their service to the city and enthusiastic service in these positions. And always thank our boards and commissions for the work they do to help us advance the roadmap for success for all citizens. So. We had, and I just realized, I gave my report before I, and I passed over Mr. Tolan, who has, council introduced items, so we will consider that. And that is an update on the GIC Housing Committee. Sorry, Mr. Tolan. I didn't mean to do that. I was so excited about my appointments.
Thank you. I, Ms. McGrew gave me a call last week, and she wanted to know what was going on with housing. And it got me thinking, you know, we're approaching our halfway mark through our Georgia for Initiative, Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Journey. It's a three-year program, and we're coming up on a year and a half. So I figured this would be a good time to kind of give council and the public an update on, on what we've been doing over the last couple of years, actually, the last four years for me. So I will try to be as brief as possible, but I'm gonna touch on everything. Mr. Patton is here to, to keep me honest. I did kind of confer with him, so I think that this is pretty comprehensive. So I'm just gonna start the Down Payment Assistance Program that was approved recently, and that will afford people that are buying their first home up to $12,000 in forgivable loans for a down payment. Those can be stacked with other programs. There's other programs from the state that could be coupled with the, with the Canton Down Payment Assistance Program. So that's, that's pretty exciting. We're, of course, hoping that interest rates will come down soon so that some of those folks can come out of the woodwork and, and take advantage of that. The next item is our ADU plans. They were approved by the city in 2023. There are four plans, which I hope people will take advantage of, and I'll go through that here in just a second. But there are, our four plans, a studio is 304 square feet. There's a one-bedroom that's 506 square feet, a two-bedroom that's 702. And there's also a unit with a garage and a house above at 807 square feet. Permit fees for ADUs is a whopping $300. So we do have, we do have one unit that is under construction right now. So that's very exciting and hope that other people will take advantage of the ADU opportunity. The, the thing that comes to mind always is, you know, who, who would, who would benefit from an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit? And that's anybody that may be on a fixed income that could use the money. Maybe they want to move into the ADU and rent their home out, rent the ADU or allow a family member to live there at no charge. So there's lots of opportunities that the ADU could present to residents of the city. One of the limiting factors of an ADU is currently you cannot get a standard loan. You need to go through HELOC, Home Equity Line of Credit, or use cash. But I understand there are some rumblings in the investment and banking community that may tweak that just a little bit. So stand by for more on that. The next is the North Canton Cottage Village. We're working on that. The survey and geotechnical work has been completed now. Fire safety concerns were resolved recently by moving from a two-way street to a one-way street. This is brand-new information. And as of yesterday, Mr. Patton received a, a rendering from Branch Concepts that employs that one-way street. So that's exciting. And he is gonna be presenting the details of that, I believe, at our next meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Patton? Okay. The next thing is the Cottage Home Development Reg, Regulations, excuse me. And you can see all that. I won't go through all that, but there's, those regulations have been adopted. The Cottage plans, of course, are available to people that want to build a home at no charge. So that's kind of unique to the City of Canton. The next thing is the, I wanted to go over the Canton Tax Credit Projects. Of course, Tanner Place was approved. New construction of 70 units, which will replace both the Ship Street and the Jefferson Circle units. That's exciting, and that's coming up very soon for a groundbreaking Tanner Place. The timeline, financial package is closing in April next month. Construction will start in May. The lease-up will start in February of 2025. And they anticipate, and these are all, of course, moving targets based on factors like weather, construction will be completed in the October-ish timeframe of 2025, and they hope to have those stabilized by January of 2026. The, the next one is the Oak Side behind the old, old RT Jones Hospital, also approved by DCA. The Housing Authority is working on a plan to develop the site with new units and potentially add additional stock, which would be great. Lots of need out there. And you see the, the timeline, the closing should, should happen around the fourth quarter. Construction again in the fourth quarter. Lease up around six months after that. Construction within about 18 months after the construction start, and then stabilization three months later. Moving on to the Tippin Site, I believe we've all heard a lot about the Tippin Site. That's an old, old school, kind of in what we refer to as the Old Mill Village Number Two. Demolition is slated to start in April of this year and should end in June. We then, I believe, are gonna convene some community stakeholders to have some discussions about what will happen with that site. So lots of excitement around that. The other thing is that we are working on a Cherokee Regional Land Bank Authority. So the purpose of that is provide affordable, excuse me, attainable housing largely through repurposing underutilized properties. So more, more on that later. But Cherokee County and six cities are participating. The requirement of a community land bank is that the county must participate. They have decided they do want to participate, but they want to have an arm's length They have decided they do want to participate, but they want to have an arms-length relationship with the six cities, as the six cities will kind of manage that endeavor. Each local government will have an appointment. Cherokee Office of Economic Development will have an appointment. There'll be an at-large appointment as well, so that's, that's pretty exciting. The Canton Land Trust is something that Mr. Pat, excuse me, Mr. Patton is exploring, and it's a viable, explore the viability, the use of the land trust as an option to improve opportunities for building a home in Canton. A land trust can typically reduce the cost of a home by as much as 25%. So the idea is, is that an individual or municipality could own the land and lease that land to a potential person that might build a home, typically a 99-year lease, and so then that, that homeowner would then only be responsible for the 75% of the cost of the home. So another creative way, I think, that we might utilize here in Canton to, to help curb some of the, the rising cost of homeownership. And then I wanted to touch on the GIC Housing Team. We're made up of several stakeholders from the city, as well as folks from real estate, Canton Housing Authority, the banking community, developments, nonprofits, and we're approaching the midpoint of our three-year journey, as I mentioned before. Area of the cities, areas of the cities that we've identified, Newtown, the Mill Village Number Two, which is the first target area that we're gonna be working on. Stumptown's another one, Mill Village Number Two, which is Roosterville and Wendy Hill, and then the Sunnyside area. We have developed or assigned subcommittees that will be tasked with, with three different things. The resource team, I'm heading that, and that's essentially, you know, where are we gonna get the money? Where are we gonna get the people to do the work? Education and engagement, that's Mr. Leonard Akers, and that's how are we gonna communicate what we're going to do to the community? And then neighborhood revitalization is headed by Mr. Patton, so essentially organizing the work that is gonna be done. Just real quickly, the, the idea is that we, in areas that are in need, we want to encourage those residents that are homeowner occupied, that if they need financial help, we want to try to help them as much as we can, and, and I do believe we have a very caring community that, that would, would pony up as it relates to funding most of this. There's a, there's a software program that's gonna help us assess where we are. It's, it's from a company called Fulcrum, and essentially, it will speed up the, what we call windshield survey to kind of determine where gutters might need some help, painting, windows, things like that. So that's, I believe Mr. Peppers is working with Mr. Patton to possibly do something in the spring or the summer. The first target area, as I mentioned, is that Old Mill Village Number Two, 207 owner-occupied homes in that particular area, and we're working through various groups, including Cherokee Collective, to identify folks that might be willing to help with some of that work, because there's, there's gonna be a lot of work to be done. Wrapping up here, I promise, and we're gonna be, of course, securing volunteers. We've identified some folks like scout group, scout troops, nonprofits, high schoolers, and community volunteers. Lots of really good people, as I said, in Canton that want to roll up their sleeves and help with that endeavor. So we, we plan on going out to the businesses, especially the larger businesses, for some funding, and hoping that we can get some minimal seed funding from the city to kind of help jumpstart some of that. I, I think what we're gonna realize is, once we get the ball rolling, that people are gonna come out of the woodwork and offer to, offer to help. And then we, we, one of the important things, especially when you go into a community that may not be as trusting as, as other communities, is getting the word out, and so we're in the process of identifying some of the local leaders in these communities that might help us get the word out in a, in a non-threatening sort of way. Well, all we want to do is help. We don't want to, you know, hold a flashlight on anybody. So some progress that's been done in this particular area is one, I mentioned the one ADU is under construction, two duplex, two, two new duplex rental units, that's a mouthful, three detached residential units, and then one property has been identified for a cottage, cottage housing development. And the last thing is, we've got our spring retreat coming up in Tifton next month. Very excited about that, and I believe we have Mr. Patton, 12 members that are gonna join us down there, so excited to present our sophomore report on where we've, where we've come. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tolan, and appreciate that comprehensive report and update. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Mr. Patton, for your leadership and your continued knowledge contributions to our housing initiatives, and thanks to all the members of our housing and GIC team for all the, obviously, all the work that you're doing, and we're starting to see some real results to that. So appreciate your efforts and appreciate the updates and look forward to, to future And I believe that completes our agenda tonight. Is there anything else? Anyone? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Don't you guys rush in? I know you want to keep having quality time together, but anyway, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.